Good evening and welcome to Tuesday, March 11, 2025, School Committee Meeting here at Tinsborough High School PDC. My name's Anthony Tenorelli, officially call this meeting to order. I will remind everyone that these meetings are audio and video recorded. And I will start with introductions to my left.
Evan Cody.
Becky Stanton.
Mike Woodlock, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flannan, Superintendent.
Danielle Athanas.
Ryan McMahon.
Stacy Guido.
Rob Mullin.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
Thank you, everyone, and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the February 24, 2025, School Committee and Tribe Board Minutes, or School Committee Tribe Board Meeting Minutes. The School Committee Minutes from February 25, and also the Executive Session Minutes from the 25th. Executive Session Minutes not to be released at this time.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
One abstained.
One abstained. Mr. Burton. Citizens' time. Seeing none. Correspondents?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I did receive an email request from Principal Ogden yesterday afternoon, so didn't have time to make the agenda. Given the fact that this is timely and the kids would like to get approval on this, I think it's important that we present it and take action on it. So in your drive and out and your backup, as you know, you recall about a month ago, we approved a DECA trip into Boston for a regional competition. We were very fortunate to have several students qualify to go on to the national competition. That is going to take place April 25 through April 29. So I did receive a late request from Mr. Ogden to see if we could get a committee approval for overnight for those students to travel and compete at the national level in Orlando, Florida.
And that was April 25 to 29?
Correct.
Can I get a motion?
I will make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Congratulations to all those kids.
Yes.
Who qualified, and thank you to the staff for taking them and doing this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That does carry. We have no personnel at this time, so we will move on to share the success. Evan?
We have another long one this time.
That's Evan.
At TES Student Council members, we'll manage to drive to collect food and supplies for families in need. The drive will begin Wednesday, March 12, and runs through Friday, March 28. Donations can be dropped off in the main lobby at TES. We appreciate your support. Recently, students have enjoyed visiting and shopping at the PTO School Store. This Wednesday, PTO will host the annual Bingo Night. We look forward to seeing everyone there. Thank you to our dedicated PTO for supporting our school community. Last Friday at TMS, some of the members of the student council went to TES for a Read Across America activity. This is March Madness Week at the Middle School. Students will be dressing up each day of the week to celebrate. The March Madness Basketball Competition is after school on Tuesday and Thursday with the finals on Friday. There will also be a dance, the Shamrock Shake, on the 21st. This Thursday evening is the celebration of learning from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Sports begin next week. Students can sign up for middle school softball, baseball, or outdoor track. Eighth-grade boys and seventh and eighth-grade girls can play high school lacrosse. Finally, the end of the term is this Friday, and third trimester classes will begin on Monday. In THS News, student artwork is on display at the Tinsborough Public Library. An opening night reception was held on Wednesday, and art will be on display during the month of March. Congratulations to Ethan Gambino, Troy Gregoire, and Neil Patel on qualifying for the DECA International Career Development Conference in Orlando. They are in qualification last weekend at the Massachusetts DECA Conference in Boston. Winter Sports Awards Night is taking place Wednesday, March 12 at 7:00 p.m., and spring sports get underway on Monday, March 17. Good luck to the theater as they compete in the semifinals of the METG Competition Festival at Framingham High School on Saturday. Finally, March Students of the Month are Callie Alexa, Andrew Burnett, Caitlin Gugizato, and Kayla Moore.
Very, thank you. No subcommittees this evening, unfinished business. MSBA update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, jump right to the slide deck. As always, I list our upcoming meetings. We have our budget hearing, public hearing, next School Committee meeting on March 25. And then Monday, April 7, we do a tribe board meeting at Town Hall, begins at 6:00 p.m., and that's typically the one where our state legislators come and give us an update from the State House. So that's what's coming down the pike. In terms of the MSBA update, we had, we spent a lot of time in the middle school last week. First bullet point, March 19, next Wednesday night before the School Building Committee. School committee members are also welcome to attend a tour of the middle school that'll begin at 5:45 p.m. Ongoing, ongoing work at the middle school right now, the elevator is going in, plumbing finishes are going on, window shades, I don't have to read it to you. Last week, the TMS tour was very successful. We went Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. We had approximately 10 to 15 staff members each day on the tour, and it was exciting to see the excitement in their face as we look at new spaces and they're starting to envision themselves in the school. It's kind of just been this big block building, they haven't really been on the inside in a while, so it was great to get in there and really kind of see how it's going. One of the things that we learned is, we're at the point now where pretty much the classroom wings are almost complete. They're ready to be locked off, closed off, and they're spending the bulk of their time in the common area. There's a ton of work to do in the cafeteria that they're working on right now. They're doing the epoxy floors in the locker rooms, they're finishing off common bathrooms, they're doing the woodwork down the main lobby way or main hallway. So it's really exciting. Carpet's in the central office, the carpet is in in the admin offices. It really is coming together, so I'm looking forward to everyone seeing it next week on the tour, especially the School Building Committee members and School Committee members because it's been a while since you've been in there, and I think you're going to be blown away when you see it. So that's exciting. And the pictures that I share only go so far. At our next meeting on March 19, you know, I think it's going to be important that the, the OPM left field really lay out what's next. Because I know that there's conversations happening out there that, you know, we're not getting a softball field, we're not going to have a parking lot. We're going to put all that information to bed. We are getting a softball field, that has never not been in the project, and we're going to start to talk about what the phasing of the parking lot will be for the summer work and what it looks like when we return. It's literally going to, they're literally going to begin demolition of TMS the Monday after teachers are done. So when the kids walk out, we're going to give the teachers one day to clean out, then that following Monday, they're going to come in, the fence will be up, and they'll start abatement and demolition work. So it really is exciting. They need to have that softball field in place by November so it can have a winter grow and be ready to play on in the spring. So all those timelines will be mapped out at our next School Building Committee meeting, as will, I believe, an update on where we are in terms of reserve funds. So, so that's what we got in terms of the update. I put a couple pictures in here. It's really neat just to see completed classrooms. Those are two typical core classrooms in different hallways. You can see a different paint on the accent wall in the front of the room. Typical completed science classroom. Looks great. Entryways are done, doors are in, it just, it's amazing. And then the floor-to-ceiling windows are incredible and just, the attention to detail is really impressive. So, you know, kudos to J C J for designing it, and the installation by Fontaine has been impressive. So they've been great to work with. The last picture we have in there is just a cool accent. It's like clouds up in the media center with the lights, that's really impressive features as well. Again, another common area that needs a lot of work right now, the fixtures up top are done, but the flooring and the wall and all, that stuff needs to happen. So it's in a great spot. It's in a great spot, and it's exciting to kind of see the progression. But I think that's all I have. Update.
Awesome, thank you. So any of you that do come to next Wednesdays, 5:45, walk through, you're more than welcome to stay for School Building Committee meeting. Teaching and Learning, Mr. Woodlock.
Thank you. Quick update from me tonight, just upcoming for us, we have our Inclusive Academy Full Team Meeting. That's with our representative from the state, as well as representatives from each of the building and our admin teams. We have an all-admin meeting coming up next week before our building tour. Dr. Flannan and myself, Ms. Lewenzic, and all our admin from each of our buildings will be getting together, talk about a lot of the things that we need to start doing to plan for next year. We have our last of four building walkthroughs in each of our buildings coming up the end of this month, and this doesn't need School Committee approval, but we did approve it last year. Our SOA plan that we're expected to submit every three years, our updates due April 1, it's good to go. We're going to be submitting in a timely manner, so we're good there. One of our goals in the SDI that you'll find throughout there is really trying to think about what does our professional development for teachers look like next year? Obviously, teachers are going to have some input on what that's going to be, but we've had a lot of outside professional development with keys to literacy taking up a bulk of our middle school and elementary school PD over the last three years. And we also had Leslie University working with our math department at the middle school for two years. So next year is a year we kind of get to reset and say like, what do we need? You know, if we need to bring, you know, outside providers in, we'll do that, obviously, but it's really a great opportunity for us to kind of reset and say like, what do we need to do for our staff? And so one of the things that we've identified in working with a lot of districts around here, attending national conferences, is making sure that we are at least able to identify the uses for artificial intelligence in the school building. And that's, you know, how does, how do we provide opportunities for students to utilize that? How do we teach teachers to become more effective in utilizing it to make their jobs a little bit easier? So we really want to get ahead of the curve on this, and so we are going to partner with EdTech Teacher, who is, it's the, one of the leading technology professional learning providers in the U.S. We did have a presentation at our NVSA meeting a few months back from Tom Driscoll, who is the owner of this company, and we feel like it can be a really valuable tool for our teachers. So in the summer, at our admin retreat, we're going to have EdTech teacher in and do a half-day with us, all of the admin. And then for our first full-day PD, we're going to have a half-day for each of our campuses for our teachers just to become more fluent in what AI is, what it isn't, how to utilize it to be more effective and more efficient in their own teaching practices. One of the biggest, let's say complaints, but barriers for teachers is time. And if we can educate them and help them understand how they can use this to save themselves time in planning and preparing, it might take some of the anxiety away from the profession that is teaching these days. So we're also keeping the May PD Day, which is another full day we have in 2026, as a potential for follow-up there. So AI for teacher use is important, but we also want to say like, how do we educate ourselves to use AI effectively in the classroom? How do we begin to prepare utilizing AI in our lessons so that students can understand how to use AI responsibly and effectively? And, you know, not cross the line of turning in things that they didn't create necessarily, but using it to generate ideas and things like that, which is how a lot of us who are starting to use it are using it. So we all have a lot to learn, and it changes rapidly, so we don't want to get too far behind the curve on this. So we're pretty excited about offering this to our teachers. We know a lot of our teachers are utilizing it already. We certainly know a lot of our students are, so it's really important for us to get up to speed on it. Any questions on that? Nope. All right, that's it for me.
Awesome. New business.
All right, Mr. Chair, let's move on to the MASSS Legislative Committee. As this committee knows, I represent, I, myself and Jay Lang, Superintendent Jumps, are the two representatives on the MASSS Legislative Committee. And I thought after our last meeting was important to bring back some information that they're sharing, that they're kind of putting out there publicly, as well as giving update on what really is happening at the state level in terms of legislative policy. Right now, in your drive, you'll see a joint statement from MAS C, Mass School Committee, MAS S, Mass Superintendents, and MAS Bo, Business Administrators, that really talks about the impact of financial expectations and financial, state mandates and the lack of finance, of financial support for those mandates across the Commonwealth. I think what we're seeing in a lot of, throughout the Commonwealth is regional schools are really taking a hit right now. I think smaller rural districts are taking hits, and depending on where you are in your student population, the financial impact across the state is rough. So these three organizations thought it was important to come together and at least put out a public statement that districts could lean on so that community members know that if your district is facing a hardship, you're not alone. It's a statewide trend, it's a national trend, but specifically to our state, this is what's going on. We all talked about that fiscal cliff and depending on ester funds that have dried up and since gone, and creating structural deficits that have happened throughout the state. It really, it's a statement to say, we have an issue and it needs to be figured out. That being said, as we look at the MASSS legislative priorities, there are five bills that we're pushing, but we're really, as a superintendent association, focusing on one. And our first bill talks about the impact of special education and the funding that goes with it. And that kind of leads to my next bullet. As you know, I serve as the president of the Merrimack Valley Superintendent Roundtable, and we are hosting a legislative breakfast on March 21. We have 17 representatives and senators from the Merrimack Valley coming. We have over 45 superintendents coming, and we're going to present, and we're really going to focus on MASSS legislative priority number one, funding and special education. The sustainability and viability of it. And what we're actually really going to do is we're going to take four communities, Tewksbury, Methuen, Woburn, and Westford. And we're going to use those four communities and show a cross-section analysis of the impact of transportation, the impact of odd district tuitions, the impact of budget approval that happens in May versus actual expenses, which happen a year later when there's so much influx and movement. And we're going to look at the, the lack of circuit breaker reimbursement and the impact that has on those four communities. And we chose those four communities, A, because they have people that volunteered to do it, and they have strong special education backgrounds. So they're experts in the field and they will speak to that. And we're going to try to get the message across to our state legislators that the way things are trending right now, we're all seeing an increase in identified students, we're seeing an increase in tuition costs and transportation costs and van monitors and nurses. And if it continues on this trend, it really is unsustainable. So we're going to try to tell our story, our local story through those four districts, to get support for legislative priority number one. So we'll see how it goes, hopefully it goes well. Representative Gary did respond, she will be in the room. I do know that, so that's, that's good and positive. The last thing up here that I just wanted to provide an update on is we also did a poll of all the superintendents in the Merrimack Valley in terms of how they feel about potential cellphone legislation coming down the pike. And it seems, it's legislation being pushed by or being drafted by the Attorney General, supported by both the Senate and the House. And it seems that there is a, a lot of support for this legislation. You can see by the percentage on the pie chart here. I will say that the majority of the noes are vocational schools that don't want to be mandated what to do in terms of having cellphone policies. And honestly, vocational schools are just high schools. You know, when you have a K to 12 different district, it's a different animal altogether. So the legislation looks like it has momentum, looks like it is real, and will be coming down the pike at some point. And I think what it's going to require is that every district have a policy about cellphones. It is not going to say you have to adopt this policy. It will give you exemplars as to what the policy will look like, but you could hear from anything from a total ban, which is when students walk in, they have bags that they put their phones in, and they're locked up for the entire day. I believe Lowell Public Schools has something similar to that.
I believe Innovation does, too.
So some places have that. You'll see a limited use ban where kids have to put their phones when they walk into a classroom on the back of a door in like the old, the old shoe holder kind of thing, and then they take it when they leave and they're not allowed to use it anywhere else. And you'll see a limited use policy potentially where students can use it at the teacher's discretion at the end of class, at passing time, at lunch, at when. So there are, it's a tiered approach, and you need to find out, you know, context matters here. What may work in Tinsborough may not work in Champs-États or Belgrade. So when we see what the legislation looks like, we will have communication with our students, we'll have conversations with our community, and we'll make a decision based on what's best for Tinsborough. So, and I think what a lot of places are trying to do is differentiate the policy between middle school and high school. There should be more restrictions potentially in the middle school than a high school. So we'll, we'll have all those conversations when it's coming, but just to let you know that is, continue to come down the pike and stay tuned for more information. Now, I'd be academic calendar. This is the fun time of year where we get to say, this is what the calendar is going to look like next year. There are no significant changes from this year's calendar to next year's calendar. I did share this with the union, they're on board with it right now, so, so I think we're in a good spot, and I think it's the most logical approach.
I will seek a motion to approve the calendar.
So moved?
Second.
And that is for the 2025-2026 school year.
Correct.
Any discussion?
I just, I'm going to preface this by saying, this is not a question that I have, this is a question that I've had many parents ask me over the last couple of years. Is, what is, and this, so this is more just so they can hear the reasoning, what is the reasoning for the no school on Friday of the Labor Day weekend versus, and there's like a half-day in there somewhere that I often get questioned about, too? of the Labor Day weekend versus, and there's like a half-day in there somewhere that I often get questioned about, too? I think for a lot of parents, the, the reason they ask the question is it's the tough to get into a routine for some kids. And I preface this by saying I plan on voting in favor, but just so that people can hear the reasoning behind that first three-day scheduling, I think.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I think this is something we've done for, for a lot of years, and I think one of the things that we, we actually received a lot of positive feedback is, it is such a shock for kids to have all summer off and then come back to school, and they are drained and exhausted. So to ease back into it with a three-day week, four-day week, five-day week, it seemed to be the most logical way to do that. And I, I think our teachers enjoy that as well from the professional side, because again, our teachers are working other jobs in the summer, on vacation, and they're coming back. And, and when they're going full-time, i- it's hard the first week. So to kind of ease back into the schedule, I think, you know, it makes a lot of sense, and it's, I think it's better for everyone. I mean, you've seen the kids on the first week of school. They're coming home. They're crashing at 3:00 in the afternoon. So, uh, so it's just a way to kind of get back into the system and, and kind of get back into things.
Dr. Flanagan, if I remember correctly, too, there was a lot of absenteeism on that Friday with people going on Labor Day vacation. And, you know, that, we've talked about it here, having kids not in school for any days is not a good thing. So this eliminates that absenteeism.
If your camp's not closed up, if your beach house isn't closed up, and you're doing those things, we got a lot of kids getting dismissed.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Or not coming, so. So that's the rationale behind it.
Awesome.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carry 700.
So, Mr. Chair, each year, we, we took a vote to participate in the Massachusetts School Choice Program. Historically, actually, this is the first in a few years. Historically, we've not had seats available at the elementary school, and we've kind of accepted kids in the middle school and the high school. This year, we're offering five seats in grade one, five seats in grade three, five seats in grade six, and then 10 seats at each grade in the high school, nine, 10, 11, and 12. Certainly much easier to absorb kids in a high school where we can differentiate their schedules as opposed to the classroom setting at the, at the lower grades. So the, in consultation with the building principals, this is their recommendation, and I fully support that, so.
How many of these seats do we actually fill? I know we approve them.
We approve them, um, it depends year on year. I can get a report if you'd like.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Generally, generally speaking, I don't think we have closed seats. I think we have one grade that's closed this year. But other than that, we still have available seats. I approved last year.
All right. I was just curious.
Is 10 the maximum we're allowed?
No.
And we get the funding for that?
Mm-hmm. From the Senate District. Again, it has to come from Massachusetts School District, and we receive reimbursement.
So where this year's grade nine is really small compared to years past, what's the rationale for not opening up more seats there?
Because we don't see a lot of kids come. To that, to that point, we don't, we're not getting them. We're not, we're not even selling out what we have right now.
There's no point.
Right.
And they supply their own transportation?
100%, no transportation involved. Correct.
For the people at home?
Right.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the School Choice Program participation for 2025-2026 school year.
So moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? I carry 700. We'll turn it over to Finance. Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For signing of bills, there were nine warrants presented to the committee tonight. I do have them all back approved. And as always, in your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts. No signing of payroll tonight. We'll do that at the meeting on the 25th, and nothing under other from May tonight.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
School Committee Discussion. Evan?
Thank you. And congratulations on your future, I think, service career. And to Dr. Flanagan, that people, we have data on the other side of things. It seems still the same kind of difference, you know, going back to the start of every form.
It's, it's, it's the Tribe Board meeting all over. We have the same meeting every year.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
I just want to congratulate the students that made it to Nationals with DECA and thank Coach Richell for supporting that program.
I'm good. Thank you. I'm all set. Thank you. All set? Thank you.
For those who are catching a meeting tonight, just a reminder on that TES food drive, I believe there's also a competition for extra recess between the grades. So let's support those who need it and help those kids get some extra recess. I'm sure they won't complain, but mostly support those who need it. Congrats to DECA and the theater students for advancing in their respective competitions, and good luck at the next level. And Mr. Woodlock, as the wife of the Deputy CIO of UMass Lowell, who's like obsessed with AI right now, that's like a big topic at our house, I am very excited to see that the district is staying on top of that, so thank you for that update as well. That's all I got.
Evan said it earlier, two-thirds of the year over this Friday. Two trimesters over, two-thirds of the school year done, so I encourage everyone to, to finish strong. And to our seniors, you still have another trimester left, so don't pass out on us yet, all right? So it gets a little crazy after May 1st when we've been accepting and making all those decisions, but finish strong, so that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. And we do not have a need for executive session this evening, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? I carries. Thank you, and have a good night.